Good evening. Today is Tuesday, October 22nd. This is the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. Can I have an approval for the minutes of the October 8th meeting?
Someone?
Second.
All those in favor? Stay? We have an opportunity for public comment. Okay. We're going to move on to reports and discussion. And the first thing is a celebration of School Board Recognition Week.
So we just wanted to try to sweeten you up a little bit tonight and express the gratitude of our community, although it's not always expressed in quite the same way. But those of us who work with board members know how much you do, know how much you put into this, know how much you get out of it in terms of the satisfaction of doing good things for kids, not necessarily what you get out of it monetarily, because you get nothing out of it monetarily, but that's not why you do this job. And every year, our State School Boards Association recognizes School Board Recognition Week, which is this week. And not coincidentally, four of our board members are going to the State School Boards' convention on Thursday. Is that when you guys are leaving?
Yes.
Thursday, and representing us there and learning a bunch of good stuff to bring back and share with the rest of us. So again, without belaboring the point, we thank you for your service to our community. And we're glad you're doing it, and we hope you'll continue to do it, because the needs of our kids and their education will never end. So thank you for your...
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
And we're happy to be paid in cupcakes.
Yeah, better. You heard it.
Okay, let's move on to our principals' reports.
Good evening, everyone. I missed last month, so welcome back. It's two months later.
So you're going to speak twice as long tonight?
Yeah, sure. I actually do have been John other than...
No pressure.
And as you know, we wanted to focus on the board goal of supporting student social, emotional wellness. So that's really the theme of my report this evening. I did take the liberty of ordering, of kind of organizing things that we've been doing and continue to do, things that are new this year, and then things, new initiatives hopefully in the future, which also may mean a little later this year. But so I organized it that way. So things that we've been doing and continue to do. We are, as you know, in our second year of implementing Second Step and beginning with kindergarten students. They get targeted developmentally appropriate lessons that are research-based, teacher-informed, and classroom-tested to promote social, emotional development, safety, and well-being. Some topics they touch on are conflict resolution, bullying prevention, and certainly recognizing, responding to, and reporting abuse. So those are just a few things that we do. But a really successful program. We're hopefully working on doing that K-5. But we are in our second year of doing it. And we have three staff members that deliver that instruction: Nora Kindley, Brielle Grover, and Fawn Johnson. So we're excited about the second year of that program. It's a very good program. And obviously, you know, one of the big parts of it being so good is because it was developed with teachers in mind, teacher-informed, and research-based. So along those lines, our second year also the Great Body Shop. So in addition to the social, emotional topics they touch on, maybe not in this depth, as much depth as Second Step, but they also focus on physical wellness, which obviously has a lot to do with social, emotional well-being as well. We're also continuing our sixth year of implementing the initiative of peer mediation. We just started training now, so it took a little bit longer. I may have reported last year, we had kind of changed the process in which students have an opportunity to further hat in the ring for that, for training. It used to be they were nominated by their peers. We actually shifted it, and they nominate themselves. And there's a, Morgan Labruto and I put together a protocol that really asks them to ask very specific questions and put it in essay form and kind of apply some of the things that they certainly learn in fifth grade. And then we also get teacher feedback, and then Morgan and I sit down and do our best to offer that to as many students as we can. This year, we were able to offer it to eight students, and then we have two students on our waiting list. So we're excited about doing that. And for those of you who may not know, we not only train the fifth-grade students to work with their younger peers, but they work with primarily Morgan Labruto, I'm always available if they, if both of, she thinks both of us should sit in on a meeting. But we have a referral process, and then Morgan usually takes the lead, chooses a few, a couple of students, up to three, fifth-grade students to sit with those younger students and go through a mediation process, you know, issues in the playground, conflict resolution, things like that. We're in our third year, I believe, of our homegrown PBIS system. We use the CLS HERO tag, which I have a picture of here. We're in our third year of that, which includes affirmations and notes of appreciation each day during morning announcements. I use this sheet where the letter gets photocopied in color on the bottom. Sometimes I have to shrink it down, but it just basically says, "Thank you so much for your act of kindness. We acknowledge you during our morning announcements," so that all CLS will share in celebrating in your good deed. Very often, I will hand-deliver those to students, so shortly after they hear me say that over the last week or thank that student for whatever it was they were doing, very often I will hand-deliver that. And it also comes with a tag as well. So we're in our third year of that. I also wanted to mention our buddy benches at recess. It's, we have one stationary, and then we were lucky enough, an Eagle Scout a couple of years ago made a second one for us that's mobile, so that in the winter, if you come on the blacktop, we can move it around. And a big part, yeah, right, it was your stuff, right? So that's been very successful, super durable, by the way. We don't take it in in the winter. It's out there all the time. But one of the big parts of that, it's more than just, I wanted to just take an opportunity to explain kind of the process. It's more than just students sitting down, you know, if they don't have someone to play with, and, you know, a staff member going over. I do have aides outside who's kind of, there's two specific ones that I do ask to kind of pay attention to the buddy bench. And one of the things I talk to them about is not so much walking up to the student who's sitting there and saying, "Hey, why don't you go join that group?" It's kind of the opposite. And I kind of leave it up to them to maybe go choose a student or two who's already playing something and encourage them to go over to that student. So that's how we kind of work with that. So the buddy benches are still in effect, both of them. And finally, in that section, our social skills group with Morgan Labruto, our school social worker. She organizes them kind of as needed, does ebb and flow from year to year based on what students need. In fact, we just brought a child-to-child study this past Thursday and discussed opening up a new group for this student and a second student we've been discussing. So I did want to thank in public Morgan Labruto's flexibility. She has, as many of us do, a pretty full caseload, and she always takes time to make sure she can kind of incorporate these new initiatives in. So we're going to be starting another group there. Some things that are new this year, some trainings. September 27th, Superintendent Conference Day. Some highlights, we've kind of had a lot of different things going, a bit of a mixed bag with the staff. But some highlights pertaining to this topic included our CLS specialist team took some time to continue planning their 2019-2020 Character Red units, Harry Potter, for example. Our ENL team, the district team worked with the Red Hook ENL team and ways to supporting that population who have very specific needs. So we were great to kind of, we were happy to be able to provide that opportunity for another district to work with our team. And the CLS PPS team actually worked together to kind of make sure they trained each other and kind of turnkey the new information around suicide prevention protocols and updates. So those were three big things that we did around that initiative. Wanted to mention that something new this year, our PE team, K-5, does mindfulness at the end of each class now. So in addition to them spending their time there, the CLS PE team puts time aside to refocus students through mindfulness activities prior to the teachers picking them up from special. So that's a new initiative that just organically kind of came about based on the interest of those two teachers, and we're finding a lot of success with that. I wanted to mention new this year, we have our TV monitor in the lobby, which in addition to being a great way to just communicate dates of interest, backpack safety, certain things like that, I also utilize it for positive messages. So one that's up now, "One Kind Word Can Change Someone's Entire Day." And I try to create an image in this one. It's just a big heart to kind of catch your attention as you walk by. We have one that I won't read to you that's a little bit longer, but talking about how you may have heard some version of it where, you know, "Hey, kids, some kids might have nicer clothes in you, or better things, or going vacations, or nicer homes, but be the kid that's kind, be the kid that listens," that kind of thing. So, you know, listen to other people, empathetic. So I try to use that monitor as another way to kind of just spread really positive messages to students. And the staff has started kind of, you know, showing me some great quotes to put up there as well. So I'll be utilizing that all year. This year, we also started every Friday School Spirit Day. We wear district colors, our CSD or CLS gear to show you a school spirit shirt. Doesn't really have to be a shirt. We talk about, we tell kids it could be, you know, socks, borrow a tie from your parents, be creative. So we just started that, again, just kind of building on the social, emotional wellness of our students. And then we'll also, coming soon, I have a proposal in the works from one of our staff members who's hoping to do a mindfulness enrichment program for K-2 and then K-5. So it might be one of the memos that come across your plate soon enough. In the future, some things looking ahead, as my colleagues will probably tell you, on November 8th, Superintendent Conference Day, all R C S D staff will be joining Lynn Lyons in the auditorium, and she'll be focusing on preventing anxiety and depression and skills that we can teach children and teens to that effect. Topics like problem-solving, emotional management, interacting with students suffering from anxiety. In addition, we've also secured her services four separate times to work with our district-wide PPS staff as well. So I assume they'll probably meet the third quarterly, but they will also be part of that initial full-day P V in November. In addition, as you may know, Global Compliance Network, G C N, we started using that for our sexual harassment, bloodborne pathogens right to know training. And we're hoping to start to kind of share some of the offerings, because there's a lot more than just those three pieces, around student, social, emotional wellness with my staff. Topics include gender expression, anti-bullying, behavior interventions for students with disabilities, educating migrant students, things like that. So there's a lot of great resources. Some of them are 10 minutes long, some of them are 40 minutes long. They fit very easily into faculty conferences. And I think it'd be another wonderful resource to take advantage of that we already have in-house. And finally, today, I spent all day at the Duchess County School Safety Advisory Committee with our SROs. Last year was the only year in my 11 years here I missed it. So I was glad to be back there this year, learning about new initiatives around safe schools and developing quality emergency response plans. A large portion of the afternoon was spent talking about threat assessment and developing a school threat assessment team. And I'm looking to adopt a model to start to kind of gauge that, you know, really it's kind of a ladder of referral. You have the team leader, which would be me, and kind of more of a triage team, which might just be my assistant principal, myself, social worker, school nurse, to kind of go over maybe things we're seeing, patterns we're noticing for some students, and then ultimately to get to an assessment team that might, you know, be able to identify ways we can help any of these students that we see may exhibit some of the behaviors. So looking forward to kind of applying some of that. In fact, I met with my AP when I got back to the building today after dismissal and discuss some of those things. And an upcoming event, we have our ENL parent meeting in Title I A I S Open House tomorrow night, the 23rd, 5:30 and 6:30 respectfully, I think.
Any questions? I have a couple. So the groups that you're talking about with Morgan Labruto, are those, I know once upon a time they used to have like banana splits, is it that type of thing, like similar themes?
And we still have that. I can't remember, I think it's Children of Changing Families, she calls it, because it deals with actually everything from divorce to death, or a parent or family member. The social skills groups are a little bit different. They do meet on kind of the same type of schedule where she might spend, you know, have like working lunches with them. But it's more along the lines of students really learning how to just socially interact with one another, you know, reading cues, things like that. And so it's a little bit different, but it is one of those kind of standing, we try to do it every year, and it does change, again, based on...
Right. And so the online training that you're talking about for staff, is this the first year you've done of this, like the blood pathogens? That used to be done?
We did it a few years ago, and then we, last year, we did it a few years ago to like see how it worked, and then last year, we kind of put it in effect. So it looks like this is kind of our second consecutive year doing it.
Do you think that's been, you know, staff appreciates doing it that way better than...
Yeah, well, you know, and one of the good things about it, by the way, is I think even just efficiency in people who have to present. So the idea that we always have it there, we're able to provide, all three buildings can provide time to the staff to make sure we do it. We're going to do the sexual harassment training on our November faculty conference. And then probably Bloodborne Pathogens Right to Know is one of the two-hour afterschools down the road. But it gives us a little flexibility, not having to do it all at once, that kind of thing. So it's pretty good feedback. Takes about the same amount of time.
So it's not done on their own, it's still done like in a group setting, but now it's just, you can do it multiple times, or...
It's actually, it is, you do have to sign in as per your email, so that it shows that you did it. But we do have, you know, we do have grades that will work together. I don't do it as a faculty conference. I just give them time in lieu of to make sure, you know, for the sexual harassment, it's something I want to make sure we get in line and take care of early in the school year. So that's why we're doing it that way. It doesn't always work out that way.
Yeah.
And if I could just jump in there, that was the note that I put in your board packet, memo to you, which I'm sure you all read, that you're going to be receiving an email with a link to this G C N training. We used to do, because our board policy requires board of education members to receive sexual harassment training. And for many years, we dragged Marvin in and brought you guys in at 5:30 or whatever, and did that training before a board meeting. And given the fact that we've had a good experience with the G C N online training with our faculty, we thought we would start using it with you as board members. So just keep your eyes open and don't ignore it, because Whitney will be breathing down your throat to make sure you do it timely, so.
And then you wanted to expand on that answer. I think also, you know, you, it's very difficult to catch every one every time. So very often, it's a nice way to kind of have a clean list of people who haven't done it yet, and then I can, you know, for me, it was a couple of teaching assistants last year that just weren't able to get it done. So I use Flying Squad, aren't able to kind of, give them more time to make it happen. It just makes the makeups much easier.
Right. Okay. Thank you. So much going on. Thanks.
Good evening. I wanted to begin this evening by highlighting a couple of programs that we began last year to address the social, emotional well-being of the students at B M S, and then talk a little bit more globally about some of the ways that it's embedded into our curriculum on a regular basis. You'll recall that last year, we invited Alice Coleman to work with our sixth-grade students. Alice Coleman is a certified fearless living coach. Fearless Living is a program that was developed by Rhonda Britton. We were so successful last year, or we felt we were so successful last year in some of the skill building that it did with our sixth-grade students, that we invited her to come back again this year, and are currently looking to expand some of her work with our seventh graders and potentially our eighth graders. But our current seventh grade have now had a, have had some experience with her work as sixth-grade students. In terms of the structure that we used last year and in working with her, we cycled students through the home and career classes, which we quarterly in the sixth grade. We didn't find that that was as ideal a way in conducting this work, because there was no overview to all of the sixth-grade students at once, and they were receiving some of this work throughout the year. We met with sixth-grade staff and teachers and looked for ways to embed some of this work, or at least reinforce this work into their everyday practice in classrooms. We're looking to conduct some presentations with our full faculty in terms of giving them some of the skills and some of the language to support this work in their classes. And again, that's kind of the underpinning to our expansion into seventh and eighth grade this coming year. Her work is all about decreasing student anxiety. She worked with students to identify the neuroscience behind the body's response to stress and to fear, both physical and emotional fear, and then provides a number, a variety of practical strategies that students are able to use to overcome that fear, to overcome challenging situations, and to increase their ability and their desired willingness to take risks. Earlier this month, as I said, she met with the sixth-grade classes. She will be conducting seven full-class workshops per quarter with our sixth-grade students, so they're really developing, hopefully developing a significant toolbox. We found when we polled students at the end of last school year, that some of those students that worked with her at the beginning, during the first quarter of the school year, were still using some of the strategies that she had taught them at that time in terms of kind of ongoing throughout the year, particularly with the stress that develops as students near the end of the year and final exams and state assessments and all that go with that time of year. As I said, plans are underway. She's met with both the seventh-grade teams and eighth-grade teams to continue that work with her, with students at those grade levels. In addition, and this is very similar and on a related note, you'll recall that last year, Mrs. Rodier, Meg Rodier, our school social worker, developed a series of lessons working with our sixth-grade students and our seventh-grade students, introducing mindfulness practices into the classroom. She is going to expand that work this year. She's developing a series of lessons. She's going to conduct at all three grade levels on stress and mindfulness, specifically what happens, again, going back to the neuroscience of the student's reaction to stress, being able to identify that stress, being able to have a number of tools, a number of skills in their toolbox to help de-escalate themselves, metacognitive focus, refocusing of their own, of themselves. She'll be teaching mindful breathing techniques with a focus on resilience and neuroplasticity. Much of the work that she does with our seventh-grade students, not so much our sixth-grade students, but will be doing with our seventh and our eighth-grade students, is focusing on the work of Carol Dweck. And she has done a lot of work on growth mindsets versus fixed mindsets. I believe you've heard Davenport talk. Some of that work has been done at the high school level as well. So she's going to be doing, she's going to be doing much of that work throughout the school year and kind of expanding on what she did last year. As Brett said, in addition, all the district staff will have the opportunity to work with Lynn Lyons on November 8th. The work with our PPS staff is going to, and her being able to come back and work on a quarterly basis with them is really to help incorporate some of her teaching and some of her practice into our everyday, everyday practice. Going back to kind of a more global way of looking at social, emotional learning, particularly at the middle school level, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that this work, much of this work is ongoing throughout the school year and is embedded into our everyday curriculum. I know that I've pointed out in board reports in the past that a great deal of this work is really front-loaded at the sixth-grade level, helping to ensure a smooth transition from fifth to sixth grade, as well as to develop a sense of belonging and community here in the middle school. These lessons address a wide variety of pro-social skills, creating common expectations, social identity, self-awareness, empowerment, fostering empathy, inclusion for all students, metacognition and focus, and developing self-confidence, just to name a few. Again, I think it's important to point that out. Our sixth-grade students, to date, in the first two months of the school year, have had 18 different lessons in those two months that really address pro-social skills and social, emotional learning. And again, some of them are more abstract concepts and more difficult to understand and will be built upon as students progress through the school year. And then some of those are also addressing skills like organization and focus and accountability and sort of things that, you know, we want to teach them as they come into the middle school. So those are a number of, a number of those lessons are standalone lessons. They're facilitated by our PPS staff. I pointed out Meg Rodier earlier, but Carmel Fontaine does a lot of that work in our classrooms as well. But in addition to that, much of this work is embedded into our curriculum. As I'll report out throughout the school year, we'll talk about D. Cake's unit on the refugee experience. I'll talk about that probably at my board report in November. The outsider unit that Courtney Green does in E L A classes after the, after the winter break. Much of this work is embedded in our everyday practice. So again, I look forward to keeping you apprised of those and other initiatives that we, and ways in which we address the social, emotional needs of our students throughout the year. I did want to point out one other, again, I'm not sure if Joe had shared with you, but I intended to have a group of faculty members, my planning committee from Madagascar Day, that were to be here this evening to present to you and tell you a little bit about what we'll be doing this coming Friday, and then to invite you to attend some of the activities during that day. Unfortunately, two members of that planning committee are also coaching the varsity boys soccer team, who won this evening in the Mahal semifinals. So I do want to, I do want to talk a little bit about Madagascar Day this Friday, because there's been a lot of time, effort, energy, and work that's gone into this. I know that I've shared, and again, I'll go into more detail in November when they're here, but there is a lot of grant support behind this day. There are a lot of outside organizations that are really partnering with our staff to put this day on for students. We've really created a dynamic half-day program in an effort to create, to increase global awareness, to support the research and conservation efforts in Madagascar, and to share cultural experience and heritage. And in several cases, we have the opportunity to connect our students with students half a world away. Each grade level focuses on a different aspect of the cultural exchange. And at the sixth-grade level, it's primarily education. Students will view the movie Island of Lemurs, Madagascar. We will have a keynote address by Esther and Juliette Murray. Henry Frishkinet has gotten, I think we have 10 high-school students who visited Madagascar this past summer, who have been working with our middle-school students in planning this day, and our middle-school staff in planning this day, and with the assistance and support of Dr. Davenport, have been excused from their classes on Friday morning to assist us with our program. So Esther and Juliette Murray will be delivering a keynote address. Both the sixth grade and the seventh grades will be, sixth grade, eighth grade will be viewing that keynote address. Sixth-grade students will also learn about the culture of Madagascar. They'll have an opportunity to sample Malagasy food. With the grant support of the Rhinebeck Science Foundation, the Two-by-Two Zoo will be here to teach about lemurs and the cultural biodiversity of Madagascar. The seventh-grade program is more about creation and kind of a direct and meaningful exchange with the children over in Madagascar. They'll have groups of students that will be developing, producing, and performing Malagasy folktales over the kindergarten classes at CLS they'll be performing. We have a group of students that will be learning about the art of Malagasy papermaking, creating paper using local flowers. Everything that they produce will be shared with students over in Rana Mahfana, Madagascar. And then with the assistance of members of a performing group known as Zara Aina, who does a lot of, a lot of work in Madagascar, groups of our seventh-grade students will perform a series of vignettes based on climate change narratives that they actually wrote last week with the assistance of our high-school Madagascar ambassadors. And then finally, at the eighth-grade level, our eighth-grade programming is more about community outreach. We'll have groups of students that will be going out to the community and working in three area preschools, teaching preschoolers about the culture of Madagascar, reading books, doing crafts, playing Malagasy games with them. We have a group of students that will work with the Vanover Caravan, learning Malagasy dance techniques, and then teaching the second-grade classes about Malagasy dance. We have, this is new this year, we have several groups of students that are going to be teaching lessons in first-grade classes on Friday about deforestation. We're, as I said, that's, that's new this year, and we're excited about that. For each of our first-grade students will receive a staff link to take home with them. And that's a little bit about the day. I didn't, absent them being here and being able to speak with you today, I wanted to give you an opportunity to hear a little bit of an overview of the day, because if Joe hasn't shared it with you yet, he will soon. But we've provided a kind of a visitor outline of the, some of the activities that are going on in that day. And I really encourage you, it's a fantastic, you know, opportunity for our students, and I really, you know, encourage as many as you that can to come and attend some of those, some of those programs. Just a couple of upcoming events. October 29th, as I may have mentioned back in September, our sixth-grade circus program begins again next week. Look forward to telling you a little bit more about that. Look forward to telling you a little bit more about that next time. On November 1st, our anthropology club will be attending, I believe, the last fall dig, working with, working with the archaeology professor up at the park. And then finally, coming up on November 7th, we have our annual Veterans Day assembly, which will begin, as it always does, with a welcoming our local veterans into, into the school for breakfast in the morning, an assembly that begins at 9:30. Rumor has it, though I don't know that it's been confirmed yet, that our keynote address speaker this year will be our, our very own Mr. Carney from the high school. So a couple of things upcoming.
Anybody have any questions?
Thanks, John. That's a lot of great stuff. I'm really excited that it's so integrated into the curriculum already. That's, that's really nice to see. I just have a quick question for you and Brett. That peer mediation, is that continued from fifth grade into middle school? Is that something that's ever been kind of looked at as a collaboration of kind of keeping that interest going for those kids?
Peer mediation is something, and so now I'm dating myself and, and, you know, making this historical, but peer mediation is something that existed in, at the middle school level back when I first started working in this district. And, you know, for several years, we attempted to, to continue the program, but it was the feeling of, of my staff and particularly my, my PPS staff, that it was just a difficult program, again, looking at the developmental age and the kind of where students are at in that 10 to 14-year age range, they didn't find it very, very beneficial. So it's certainly, certainly an idea we could, we could revisit, but some of the research out there, it's just a very difficult age to, you know, to successfully develop a program. It works a little bit, a little bit better with students at, at younger ages, and then we have the very successful peer mentoring program at the high school. And what we do often is try to partner those peer mediators and those peer mentors with our middle school students. Doesn't always work so well when the, the age range is, is, you know, eighth grade to seventh grade or eighth grade to sixth grade.
Yeah, for us, it definitely works better because, you know, five, six, seven-year-olds is different to eight, nine, 10-year-old. So it seems really key traction at high level.
Here we look to partner our, our high school peer mentors and peer mediators with our middle school students.
John, can you tell me, dude, I know you have Ms. Rodier and Carmella is available for students. Is there anything in the middle school, like Brett was talking about, like a club or anything that's available for kids that helps them? I've been reading a lot recently about childhood traumas and how they should be addressed and kids, anything from kids going through divorce to, you know, and, and much more serious things. Is there any, anything like that?
Again, we've, we've, we've done some of that in the past and we've brought kids together with, you know, with, with like circumstances, but it's, it's very, it's very specific to individuals and, you know, again, in, in some cases, depending on the students that you're working with, it works very well, and in others, they're just not willing to open up and share in, in that sort of form at that age.
Okay. I appreciate the invitation from Madagascar. I know four of us will be at, in Rochester for the, for the NISBA conference, but four of us can't go unfortunately. And I had, I had one other question that's not about anything you presented, so if you don't, can't answer it, you could bring it back next time. You had talked to us last year about some teachers piloting getting rid of cell phones in the classrooms. They had set up, you know, a shoe holder or something that they're putting them in. And I'm wondering if that's continuing, expanding, how, how that worked?
It's continuing, I, I would say, I, I think I'm on safe ground if I say there are mixed reviews. It is continuing at the eighth grade level and it seems to work fairly well. They have shoe organizers in each of the eighth grade classrooms and students are asked to place their electronic devices in, in, you know, their designated numbered spot, you know, prior to the start of class. We, we've made it, at this point, we've made it voluntary. Certainly nobody is looking into backpacks or pockets and things like that. It, it has worked well. We've actually had some students, or it worked well last year. We had some students comment on it last year that, you know, they were pleased just to kind of get rid of it and not worry about it buzzing in their pocket. Not that it's not supposed to be off at that time, but, so, you know, I'm not sure if we're going to, it doesn't seem to be a, a real issue at the sixth grade level. We're considering doing that at the seventh grade level as well.
Okay. That's it? Oh, I'm sorry. Picking up on something else that Brett talked about, the risk assessment, looking for potential problem behaviors or concerns.
That's a, that's a, that's a K-12 PPS initiative.
Great.
So that work's going, going on across the, across the board.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Good evening. I'll follow suit with my colleagues and begin by talking about the status of the high schools' work in support of our students' social and emotional wellness. I know, you well know that the goal that you've established for the district is to focus on areas of need identified in our last school climate survey, increase PD, opportunities for instructional and non-instructural staff to support those programs and strategies. And as you may recall, and I know you do recall, based on our last climate survey, the three takeaways that we gained from reviewing the data is that our students indicated that they needed support in social emotional safety in school, social and emotional safety online and in social media platforms, and in social and civic learning. So to begin with a little bit of context, and forgive me for referring to 2016, the Board of Education approved that some of its administrators attend a workshop on emotional intelligence presented by Dr. Mark Brackett from the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence. The administrators who attended this session found his presentation very engaging, very promising, but with the initiatives that were occurring concurrently, the time we thought wasn't enough to bring that to our faculty. But we tucked that away for future consideration. Last year, again, with support from the Board of Education, four of the district's administrators attended trainings on leading a socially, a socially and emotionally responsive school. And as part of that training, which was based in part on Dr. Brackett's work, we were informed that the Yale Center was forming a third cohort of schools to learn about developing emotionally, emotional intelligence and learning organizations like schools in order to meet the needs of our students. Our superintendent attended an orientation session with Dr. Brackett as well a little bit afterwards, and he encouraged us to consider working with the Yale Center. As a result of our general familiarity with Dr. Brackett's work, the high school faculty were provided an overview of his approach and philosophy, and they were polled anonymously at the end of last year regarding the option of partnering with the Yale Center to help us support our students. An overwhelming majority of the faculty indicated in this survey the desire to work with the Yale Center. And by overwhelming, I mean 90% of the faculty responded by saying, yes, we want to partner with, with Dr. Brackett, which is testament both to our faculty's commitment to supporting our students and to the power of, of the work in, in the Yale Center. As a result, with the superintendent's approval, Reinbeck High School joined 37 other schools in the Mid Hudson region as the third cohort in the Yale Center's training. Now, I do believe we are the northernmost school to be trained. I don't think they're holding that against us. Last spring, having joined the, the program with the superintendent's approval, we were directed by the Yale Center to form an implementation team. So I asked for volunteers from our faculty to join. The groups are limited to five, so four volunteers from the high school faculty served along with me on the implementation team on September 24th and 25th. These four members and I attended two full-day sessions on emotional intelligence given by Dr. Brackett and his team at Putnam, Northern Westchester, Bosse's, in order to get the information to lay the groundwork for this conversation with our faculty and with our non-instructural support staff. Some of the principles of the Yale Center's approach are that the implementation takes time, and we're talking about years, it's a three-year process, and that implementation must begin with the adults in the school. And this was part of what made this program very attractive to the high school faculty. So in year one of the three-year process, we will work together with our faculty and our non-instructural support staff to learn about the four tools and the five skills needed to increase emotional intelligence of any organization. And because I'm, just like when I started teaching, I'm one chapter ahead of the class, I can give you a general overview of the four tools and the five skills, but we're not yet even talking with the, of the faculty about those things. We're starting with the first tool to lay the groundwork. We've learned at our training that as faculty and staff learn about these techniques, they will begin to infuse them into their interaction with students. And I know that this is true of myself and it's true of the four members who attended this, the sessions on the 24th and 25th. The implementation team has already begun our work with the high school faculty at our October faculty meeting. We're going to continue this work. Friday after Madagascar Day, we'll be meeting with both our instructional staff and our non-instructural staff to further our discussions. The work on this program will be ongoing this year with faculty and staff. Another part of the attractions that throughout, for this program is that throughout the school year, we'll have individualized coaching sessions with the Yale Center staff, as well as other conferences this year to, to make sure we're implementing the program with fidelity to its philosophy. In year two, as we've learned, teachers will begin to explicitly teach these tools and skills to our students in the curriculum. And in year three, we expand to families and to adults within our community. I look forward to updating periodically this year in the future as we continue this work. And on behalf of the faculty, I want to thank the board for its support of our partnership with, with the Yale Center. Uncharacteristically loquacious. Do I have any, any time left? Couple of other days?
Sure, yes.
So in BLPT updates, we're going to have a day of service on November 2nd. Tree planting in the village. We'll be cleaning up the memory garden here at, on campus. And we're investigating the possibility of partnering, working with the Lions Club to help clean up the mini park, which our, our students enjoy throughout the school year. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to make this a reality on November 2nd. And school news in all grades throughout this week, Title IX training for our students in individual classes has been completed. And this is in class-sized groups. I stopped by in English IX, Social Studies 10, English 11, and in Participation in Government 12 to talk with students about the board's Title IX policy. In addition, we almost completed all of our dignity for all students at training and horizons, again, in small groups in classroom settings. I have a couple of academic updates. The English department, in addition to our journalism and media courses taking responsibility for producing in video form our daily bulletin, thanks to the work of our journalism class and our club, all of our school news, and I hope this isn't a mistake, but I'll say it anyway, all of our school news is now available through an app that can be downloaded onto your iPhone or onto your Android device. And if you do so, you, like me, at 7:15 will get the daily bulletin delivered right to your cell phone. So I encourage you to do so. There's some great articles and other material, for example, a video of the Hawks' preparation for Hawk Day on that site. So I do encourage you to download this if you haven't already. In the guidance department, we're completing our parent meetings over the next few weeks. In addition to reviewing the development of guidance plan in these parent meetings, we're introducing, the guidance councils are introducing parents to Navias program that students are beginning to use in colleges one and two. They'll be introduced to Navias in health classes. Once students have, have logged in, then parents will be provided information in terms of how to access the Navias program as well, so they can work with their children in terms of exploring colleges and careers. In extra-curricular news, I want to recognize the hard work of our student council in planning and implementing Hawk Day on October 11th. Thanks to Mr. Kennerzer for his flexibility and thanks to our food service director, Mr. Anthony, for his help and his staff's help. From my perspective, it was once again celebratory, inclusive and very positive for all of our students and ended on a very high note. It was a great way to open up the Andy Bennett Tournament weekend and open up the beginning of the school year. The student council is soliciting feedback for Hawk Day currently to help for its planning in, in the sprint for the Spring Hawk Day. Looking ahead, we have a 9th, 10th grade parent meeting on Thursday, an 11th grade parent meeting on October 30th, 8th grade parent meeting on November 6th. JV and varsity winter athletics begin on November 12th. I can't remember saying that already. We have our Fall Drama, Almost Maine, which will be staged November 15th to 16th, and a town show, a town show that features the towns of our BMS and RHS students, takes place on November 21st.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. I know, I know the answer to the question, but, so I'm throwing you a softball here.
Oh, okay. Well, you know the answer to the question. I'm sure I want.
Just going back, you will, you will. You went through the same training regarding ruler.
Yes.
Why Reinbeck High School? Why not all three of our schools? What's the rationale for that?
Sure. The rationale is, well, I should say too, that ruler is not only restricted to high school, but in terms of developmental appropriateness, the feedback we received is that it fits with what students are interested in in the high school and what they're learning about in high school in terms of psychology, in terms of personality inventories, and in terms of interacting with other students. There are lessons for middle school and elementary school, but the thought, the thought was it was the best fit for, for high school. That being said as well, in talking and listening to my colleagues, and I'm familiar, of course, with the, the work they're doing in their schools, there's nothing exclusive about the ruler approach. It certainly melds with, with what Mr. Kennerzer, Mr. Brett spoke about, particularly when we think about what the last R of ruler stands for, which is regulating emotions. That's where some of the tools and techniques that students will have learned in CLS and BMS can be put into place to help regulate their own social and emotional comfort in school.
And by recollection, and correct me if I'm wrong, from, from the introductory day with Dr. Brackett was that they encouraged, perhaps even prohibited, more than one school in a school district from getting this, from getting started. So doing it across more than one school wasn't even an option for us through this program.
Correct. Not recommended, and as you say, not, not an option.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Any questions? I guess just me.
Swear of the board president.
I, I think this, the, the rule, the ruler information is really exciting, and I think that's going to be a great foundation. I'm wondering, I've been hearing a lot lately from parents and staff, you know, about stress level and anxiety, you know, nothing that you're not aware of, and it's obviously a board goal here. So I would just, I guess, encourage you to look for things that are, that you could do now also. I mean, as this is going to take years, I would, you know, there's, whether it's an assembly or, I don't know what, what's out there, but some other things that can be happening sooner.
Sure. You know, a couple of things, as, as Mr. King mentioned, we're working with Lynn Lyons in early November in terms of stress and anxiety, and that's something that all of our faculty will, will take part in. One of the things that we've begun to learn as a team, and again, as, as the faculty begin to learn about these things, as we've been told, they will begin to infuse these practices in, in the classroom. So it's not something that's going to wait for kids until year two. For example, in terms of defining stress, we learned a definition of stress, which is too many tasks to accomplish and not enough resources to accomplish those tasks. So when you decide, define something like stress in those terms, what Dr. Brackett, Brackett told us is when you, when you name what you're feeling, you tame it. And just naming it helps regulate that feeling. And not, not that this is a confession, but as I started to think about that, then thinking, oh, so what I'm feeling is stress, this is why I'm feeling that way, and now I feel a little bit more in control, and I feel stressed out. So those are the sorts of techniques that we're being instructed in, and I know our faculty will be able to infuse within their, their classrooms, not, certainly not waiting until next year.
I have another question, and just like with John, if you don't, if you need to come back to us, that's fine. It was suggested to me recently that possibly our changing the... It was suggested to me recently that possibly our changing the passing time to three minutes is causing undue stress on some of our students. So I don't know what you think about that, if that's...
That's, that's not my perception, for a couple of reasons. When we first changed, I can't remember how many years ago it was.
Few.
Two?
At least three.
Is it three? Okay.
When we first changed from three to four, there was some discontent among our students. And as you may recall, John and I have spoken with our faculty, advised them, and they did, to be understanding and not to be quick to write up referrals for being tardy to class. What I'm seeing this year, just anecdotally in the hallways, and last year, I don't see many students in the hallways between classes. So I think students are getting in class on time. And I have, so far, I mean, it's October 22nd, we have yet to receive a referral from a teacher for students being tardy to class. So I'm not sure that, well, I am sure that that perception does not align with my perception. But as always, for any issue that a student has, we're small enough that the student can come and speak with me and Mr. Burden, we'll problem solve together.
Right.
Because we certainly don't want students to be stressed out getting from the bandroom to room 147.
Yeah, it was, it was a little surprising when I heard that as well, and I, you know, there was a conversation about not enough time to speak with teachers in between classes or do some, some small tasks they might need to do. And maybe this is just students that don't have free periods, or I don't, I don't know either, I just...
Well, our colleagues really work as a team. If the student stays after to speak with the teacher, the teacher will write the student a pass, or will pick up a phone and call the next teacher and say, I had to talk to the student for thus and such. So that's not, that's not feedback that I have received, nor has Mark's.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anybody? Yes? Thank you all for being here.
Before these guys go, I just, I don't think Brett mentioned it, and I'll embarrass myself by saying that, in the event that you did. But Brett did mention, and several others of you mentioned, that Lynn Lyons is coming to work with our staffs on November, is it the 8th? Yeah. But she is also doing a parent presentation the night before. Those of you who have kids in schools should have gotten the email, came out of Tom's office about that. It's a two-hour, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. presentation by Dr. Lyons, specifically for parents or, and/or older, older children. I think there's an age cutoff in that.
Twelve.
Twelve, yeah. And just, I think it's worth mentioning, just to do our best to get the word out there, that my, my perception over the years is that, and we didn't even discuss this at one of our committee meetings, maybe it was curriculum, I don't remember exactly, but that parents need to buy into this too. That it's, you know, it's what happens in the home as it interfaces with what's happening in school that we need to address in terms of kids being stressed out at all levels, from kindergarten right up through grade 12. So I would encourage all of you to attend, if you're available, to do so, and to spread the word with your, you know, friends and acquaintances in the school district. And we'll send out several more blasts between now and November 7th. It's the night before the superintendent's conference day that this will be occurring. So, and I appreciate the work of our administrators and planning to bring her, especially since this is one of our three big goals for this year. I think it's important that parents get locked into some suggestions they can use to help their kids deal with stress and anxiety better than, than maybe they do currently. So I just wanted to mention the parent presentation as well.
Just, and I know you have Mr. Phil, but it's worth emphasizing that Emily Davidson and Marva Krebs were instrumental in bringing Lynn Lyons to speak with us.
Yeah, and, and as long as we're pat people on the back, the Romantic Science Foundation has also provided some grant support to bring Dr. Lyons here and to provide copies of her book to the first, I think, 100 people who show up. So it's, up to this point, it's been a community effort. I'm looking forward to her presentation myself.
Joe, it sounds like a great presentation. Do you know there's inevitably going to be people that won't be able to attend? Will it be recorded or be available?
That's a great question. I don't know, but will I ask?
It won't be recorded.
It won't?
We best.
You asked, okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't say that again.
I didn't hear that.
No, it's just on camera now. Okay.
That got recorded.
Yeah, sure. All right, let's move on to board committee reports. Policy.
Policy, Jane. We've been on a sort of, and it was a follow-up on our discussion in regards to policy number 5220, student publications. And Joe met with the newspaper editors for a demonstration of the software that they use, which is designed specifically for student publications. And Joe seemed to be quite pleased with its functionality. At the editor meeting, there was also a discussion with a newspaper advisor regarding who publishes the paper, is it the class or the club? And that only a club can collect money from sponsors. They want this designation, who publishes the paper specifically, to be made very clear in the masthead of all publications. Sponsors, sponsored content, and personal ads are not to run counter to our code of conduct, and will have parameters set by the Board of Education policy. This policy is to be applied to all publications, not just Rhinebeck Reality. We were also thinking in terms of the yearbook and other types of student publications. The student publication should also make very clear to sponsors, do not reflect the view of the publisher. Joe will discuss with legal counsel, have a draft ready at our next policy committee meeting, and hopefully a fully vetted draft for board approval in November. We also discussed briefly the voting pre-registration new mandate from New York, and discussed the fact that our students have access to registration and that we already provide registration in the 12th grade participation in government class. Our next meeting will be November 14th.
Any questions for policy? Okay, we have curriculum?
We had October 16th. We continue to follow up that on fourth year, that we're going to try to get approved. Some questions were raised. So we spoke about CPR and choking, which will now be covered during PE. It has been for the last couple of years, so there's no time for curriculum, but it already helped. In the violence unit, we talked about the T and consent video, which is the appropriate version. There is a different version that has some inappropriate words at the beginning, and that is not the version that we use at the school, so that was clarified. For human growth and development, non-binary will be included in the class discussion and put on the vocabulary list. When they discuss sexual, the sexual identity unit, it was something that we hadn't seen, but they actually had wanted to do it, so it will be put on there. And then there was a quote that said local resources in the community. We just wanted clarification as to what they meant by local resources, and it was clarified that they're going to try to get doctors and nurses, DMTs, and parents, and any professional within the community to help and supplement the teaching units. They did want to specify exactly, because it may change from year to year. Also, we talked about the fact that the document does not sufficiently acknowledge sources, and there will be a short paragraph added to the introduction that will cite some sources, resources, and authors, so that we can refer back to who, where we got the information. And we'll also include that the curriculum will be reviewed and revised every three to five years to ensure that it remains relevant and that the videos don't become outdated. So we are all hoping that the board will be able to prove this by the next few weeks. We're analyzing these couple of things and looking to us. Then the rest of the time, we talked about the overview for the student achievement for the grades three to eight math and English, language arts. We talked about the ESA law, which is explained, along with the complex algorithm elements to determine school achievement. New York State requires that at least 95% of eligible students take the standardized tests that are required. Rhinebeck School District has, is unable to achieve this goal due to parents opting their children out. So it's just sort of what it is. Hopefully, we could just educate the parents as to the importance of it. And also, the only other little kink in our program is the high level of chronic absenteeism seen in our white school student population. So we could find what chronic absenteeism is. So it's six, 18 absences from a classroom instruction per year, regardless of the reason. So there, it doesn't matter if it's an excuse or an unexcused absence, it's considered an absence. We could, you know, we, we sort of just talked about it. It's just something that we feel that parents should know. It hasn't really caused us any trouble yet, but it is in our business. We talked about the New York State changing the science, fine science-based curricula that will go over to the next generation science standards, and a complete board presentation will be done by Marvin Krebs in a minute. And then what we just talked about was the earth science option for the eighth grade. We will have a meeting on November 20th with the principals to determine the history of it and why it wasn't implemented, if it can possibly be implemented, so we're going to discuss it. And then the rest are the items that we had discussed during our first meeting, and that we're just going to keep rolling on our minutes, so that we are reminded that we should continue those items. And then we meet again on November 20th.
Anybody have any questions for curriculum? I don't really have a question, but I think, you know, Marvin is going to come and present to us next meeting.
He's coming on the 12th.
I mean...
No, sorry. He's coming on the 26th.
26th, so next month, if... You know, I, I would like for him, if we could, if he could talk about if this absenteeism, I know this is, I think if I remember when he was here, is something new that they're bringing to our attention?
It's part of ESA, which is new, yes.
But I'm wondering if this chronic absenteeism is consistent with what we've had? I mean, 18 absences is three and a half weeks. That's a lot of time in a school year for kids to be missing. I also know that, you know, I can't even say where I've heard it, but kids missing school can be part of other issues that are going on. So I don't know if it's increasing as we're having more social and emotional issues, kids are having those, or if this is just where we've always been. But I, if Marvin maybe can, if he has...
Sure.
Can update us a little bit more on that, because that's, that's really a lot of time out of school.
Yeah, I'm not sure if he was able to give us a reason necessarily more than statistics.
Like I said, if it's something, if it's where we've always been, then it's maybe not so shocking if it's increased. Either way, I mean, it's a lot, that's a lot of time. Thank you. All right, that's all our reports. So we have an opportunity to again talk about the bylaws, amendments, and resolutions for the NISBA conference. I don't know if any of you have the opportunity to read, October's onboard, it had a whole thing about the convention, it's the 100th anniversary. They had a whole section, they talked about hot resolutions and topics over the years. It was fascinating. I don't know if any of you read them. It was things like, should women be allowed to go back to work after they get married? All kinds of, you know, crazy things over the last 100 years, but it's interesting reading. So if you haven't read that one yet, I would say it's an interesting read. Mark, do you have anything new?
I don't, I haven't seen any amendments come out or anything like that, so we can get a new report.
And you're clear on what our feelings are on the ones that we've talked about? Okay, we're in good hands with you on the floor.
Can I ask a quick question? I'll ask this question, Whitney, in prior years, when board members have gone out to the convention, there's been a little, it's a little powder blue colored card that designates the delegate and the alternate. Are they doing that this year? How does NISBA know who the delegate and the alternate are? Online? Okay.
Don't they get the little, you know, you have the little badge?
That's, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about how do we tell NISBA who's who? And she just answered the question, that they're doing it online now. It used to be a little, a card that I had to sign off, and I want to make sure they're still doing the card, that these guys don't leave for Rochester without the card. But if you've already registered, Mark and Liz, then...
And they sent me again, saying to register. So then I went to the lady and I said, I registered, I want to make sure that their names, and she said, yes, yes, we're just sending it like to everyone.
Good, good. Okay, great, thanks for your response. All right.
Should be a good time. We'll miss those of you that aren't able to come with us, but we'll bring back all the information that we gather. Okay, so we'll move on to good news. The principal stole...
Yeah, they always, they always steal, they always steal our thunder on a good news piece, that's for sure.
Yeah, I think they've taken it all, as far as I know, unless someone else, anyone else have any?
No, I'm, I'm hard pressed to think of anything that you've already mentioned.
Well, we heard plenty of good news, so that, that's okay. Old business?
I don't have any old business.
I don't know if it's exactly old business, but when I, when I thanked you for the cupcakes, I really neglected to thank Whitney for the cupcakes tonight. Thank you.
She didn't tell you I did that thinking?
Yeah, well, it was a team effort, I'm sure.
No, not really. It was all Whitney.
Oh, you know, I did have good news, I'm sorry. Let me go back. I think that our coffee with the board, it was really nice. So so much of our staff came out to have breakfast with us. Larry Anthony did a great job, as usual, put on a nice breakfast, and it was great to see so many staff members come out and have conversation and hear what's going on with them. So I, I appreciate the time they took in their morning to come and meet with us. Public comment? Seeing none. Other?
Those guys took my others, so...
All right, moving right along to action items. Would anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Okay. Can I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following consent items?
Mr. Moore?
Second.
Any discussion? Just want to, we have a few donations on here. Just always, our community is very generous, Science Foundation and PTSO, I think. I missed any? Just want to thank them for their donations. All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Kelly Lynch to commence honor about February 8th, 2020, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by physician in writing, through, on, or about May 4th, 2020, to extend to for accrued sick leave and thereafter, such leave to be taken as unpaid child leave, care leave, or therabouts as requested in writing.
Mr. Moore?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve as a first reading and consideration Board Policy Number 5690, student voter registration.
Mr. Moore?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the civil service appointment of Anne Marie Asher to the position of food service helper, 4.0 hours per diem, with a 26-week probation period effective October 21st, 2019, at a salary of step three, that's $13.20 per hour, in accordance with the anti-salary schedule for 2019, 2020.
Mr. Moore? Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an extension of the appointment of Larry Smith to provide teacher aid services of varsity football practices and for games as necessary and appropriate, for an increase of an additional four to five hours per day to accommodate fall 2019-20 postseason competition in accordance with the 2019-20 anti-salary schedule.
Mr. Moore?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Mary Lehan to provide aid services for after-school activities as necessary and appropriate for approximately one hour weekly, effective October 18th, 2019, in accordance with the 2019-20 anti-salary schedule, see attached.
Mr. Moore?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to... Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional coaches, advisors for the 2019-20 school year in accordance with the 2019-20 RTA salary schedule. Girls' basketball, varsity, Eric Thomas, $4,623. Boys' basketball, varsity, Dave Aristoc, $4,623. Boys' basketball, JV, Mark Berg, $3,199. Boy swimming, varsity, Kevin Storres, $4,623.
Mr. Moore?
Second.
Any questions, comments?
Is JV, Mark Berg for basketball, is that both girls and boys?
No.
It's just boys, and there's TBA?
The others are TBA right now.
So is that, that we're not having a program, or we don't have a coach yet?
Could be both, but we're waiting on numbers for a few of the other teams, so we're not certain.
So parents.
I think, my sense is that Steve's got somebody in the wings, but.
Waiting to see the numbers. So if your kids are planning on playing sports, make sure you go online and sign them up on the family ID system, that's really how we'll know who we're going to have.
So since it says Eric Thomas for girls' basketball varsity, does that mean that there's definitely a varsity team, or is that?
It means we've hired a coach for a varsity team. We assume that we have enough kids signed up that we'll have a varsity team, but until the first day of practice, you, you never know for sure, but I'm, I'm guessing that if we've, if these coaches have been recommended to us for the board to appoint, it's probably highly likely that there will be a team.
So there was, I know there was a question that they might have only a JV or only a varsity. Does this mean they thought they would go through with a varsity?
That's, that's my understanding.
Okay.
That's my understanding, but it's, it's all subject to change, depending on reality. But right now, that's what we're, we're thinking we're going to be running.
Well, it could be a problem if a lot of the younger girls are signing up, but they're not able to show for the varsity team to do the rest.
Yeah, well, again, it's all a numbers game.
Calling all girls basketball players.
We're not looking to cut any teams. We're just waiting for the numbers to shift out.
Yeah. All those in favor? That motion passes. Motion to move into executive session for the purpose of.
History of a particular person.
Employment history of a particular person.
Mr. Moore?
Second.
All those in favor? That motion passes.
Okay.